Yes, please.
All right, if we could all please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you.
And welcome to the February 22nd study session of the Livonia City Council. This is a meeting which will set the agenda for the 1,916th regular meeting, a voting meeting that will take place on Monday, March 8th, 2021. And we have all members of council with us this evening. I do not have any announcements. Does council, anyone in council have any announcements? Seeing none, we'll proceed to audience communication. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to communicate with the council on any item not in this evening's agenda. This is your opportunity to do so. You have three minutes. All right, we have, uh, we, it looks like we have, and I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name. We'll ask you to correct us and to give us your name and your, and your, um, address. Stefan Bagni?
Stefan Bagni, um, I'm with Clark Hill, and I was asked by Mr. Davis to be on the meeting in case you had any questions about the, uh, J.C. Park.
Okay, that's one of our, that's one of our agenda items.
Oh, I didn't, I just, I don't have anything to say other than I'm here if you need me.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on any item not in this evening's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move ahead with our agenda. Tonight's meeting is a study meeting. There will be no votes taken. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a resol, or a combination of resolutions for each item. Resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the benefit of the city council, benefit of the information of the city council. Please note that all the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the agenda of the regular meeting of Monday, March 8th, 2021, where they will officially be voted upon. If you would like to participate in any of the agenda items that are taken up this evening, please use the raise your hand button, or if you're, you're joining us by phone, press star nine on your phone when the item is called, and you'll be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation, followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. When you are called upon to speak, please state your name and address for the record so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the meeting minutes. Excuse me. It will also let the council members and those joining via Zoom or phone know who is speaking to them, and just a reminder, if you're joining us by phone and you wish to speak on an item, uh, please use star six to, um, to unmute yourself. And we will move ahead with new business, beginning with item number one. This is a request to waive the sidewalk requirement. This comes from Stephen and Catherine Simon for the newly constructed home located at 1-8250 Laurel in the northwest quarter of Section 9. Do we have the petitioners here with us this evening? I'm looking for the petitioners. I know that they were asked to be here tonight.
Madam President.
Yeah, so wait, I, I think maybe, let's see. Um, I see phone number ending with 7017. You should be able to unmute yourselves. There we go. Good evening.
Hello, this is Stephen Cathy Simon.
All right.
Good evening, council.
Good evening. And you wish-
I'm sorry.
No, please, go ahead.
Yeah, our, our request, we're currently building a, a new home on Laurel, 1-8250, and, um, there are no sidewalks, uh, on the whole street, and we're just requesting a, a sidewalk waiver.
Uh, Vice President Barr.
Yeah, Madam President, first of all, I want to congratulate the Simons on their new home and having what's arguably one of the most beautiful lots in the city. Um, and I'll offer approving for the sidewalk waiver, um, for consent, if there's no objection.
Any comments? All right, seeing none. Pardon me? I, I don't know, who said something? I missed that. All right, uh, no objections to consent agenda. So Mr. and Mrs. Simon, congratulations on your new home. And because it's on the consent agenda, you do not have to return to the, the meeting on, uh, March 22nd. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item number two is the reappointment of Jacob Gannam to the Livonia Board of Ethics. This comes to us from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term that will expire on March 1st, 2024. Uh, do we have, uh, Mr. Bernier?
Uh, yes, good evening. Mr. Gannam is a, a principal attorney with the County of Wayne in their tax division. I think he's been there about 18 years. He's, uh, I'm familiar with him because I worked on the Board of Ethics with him before and actually saw his work. And he does a tremendous job for the city and offers a great insight. Uh, we would appreciate it if the council would consider the reappointment of Mr. Gannam to the commission.
All right, is Mr. Gannam with us this evening?
I don't know the answer to that.
All right, uh, Mr. Gannam, if you're there and you'd like to say anything to the council, please raise your hand. Otherwise, council?
Madam President.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Dolly.
I'll offer an approving resolution, um, being recommended by Paul Bernier's, um, um, very good, uh, record, uh, to hang your head on, so we'll go with it.
Thank you.
All right, um, any other con, did you want that on consent?
Yes, ma'am, please.
Any objections to placing that on consent? All right, seeing none, we'll place the, the reappointment of Mr. Gannam to the Board of Ethics on the consent agenda for the 22nd of March. Item number three is reappointment of Suzette Samuels to the Livonia Board of Ethics. This comes just from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term which will expire on March 1st, 2024.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you very much. Um, I've known Suzette for a long time. She is, uh, an attorney as well, um, in Wayne County and does fabulous work and is a very fair-minded person. And she would, once again, be an asset on, uh, our Ethics Committee. Thank you. It's all, I made her on consent, if I may.
All right, thank you. Mr. Bernier?
Yeah, if I may just say something, because this one really is truly a pleasure for me. Suzette and I worked together at the prosecutor's office for many years. I, and I know the quality of the work Suzette does because I know the cases I dumped on her over the years as her supervisor had her drive. Suzette is one of the more honorable people I've ever met. And when the mayor, previous mayor came to me asking for somebody who I would recommend, and Suzette came to mind right away. She is just a absolutely top-notch person and a, quite frankly, a top-notch lawyer. So we would ask that the, uh, that the city council would consider the renomination of Suzette Samuels. And she is present.
I, I see that she's present, and before I ask Ms. Samuels if she has anything to say to the council, I'm going to jump on the bandwagon here and say that unlike Mr. Bernier, I never worked in the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office, so I can't speak to that. But I know, uh, gotten to know Ms. Samuels well, and I know that she is a, um, person of great integrity, very, very well-respected within the law community and our community of Livonia. So, um, Ms. Samuels, would you, is there anything you'd like to say to the council? Let's see, we should, let me, there we go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
What a ple, what a pleasure it is to see everyone, and thank you so much for those comments. And I just want to let everyone know what an honor and a privilege it is to serve the people of the city of Livonia. I'm a true public servant, and I couldn't be more honored than to serve the people of my city. And it's so good to see everyone. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Suzette. It's so nice to see you too. Look forward to seeing you in person. All right, we'll place that reappointment on the, it's on the consent agenda, so you do not need to rejoin us on March 22nd, but you're always welcome. Item number four is the reappointment of Andrew Lindrum to the Livonia Board of Review. This comes just from the Office of the Mayor for a three-year term which will expire in February 16, 2024. Um, let's see, we have Jacob Liberati, the Assistant City Assessor here. Good evening, Mr. Liberati.
Good evening, council. Hi, I'm the new, oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, council. I'm the new Assistant City Assessor. Um, I just started, actually, less than a month ago, about three weeks ago now. And we asked that Andy be reappointed to the March Board of Review. He was originally appointed in 2016, and he's been a longtime resident of the community. He brings a wealth of knowledge and experience in the real estate market, um, due to his career as a real estate agent and broker for over 30 years in the local area.
All right, thank you, Mr. Liberati, and let me say, welcome to the, uh, welcome to the city due to the COVID oddness. Um, I'm sure you haven't had an opportunity to meet everyone yet, but, uh, welcome, and we all look forward to working with you, and you're joining an outstanding team, as you know, at the Assessor's Office.
Thank you.
Before we go to Mr. Lindrum, uh, Councilmember Toy.
Madam Chair, um, as was stated, uh, Andy does a great job, and, uh, so I would like to put in for an approval on his reappointment and wish him well, and also ask for it to be on consent.
All right, thank you, and at this time, go to Mr. Lindrum. There, you should be able to unmute yourself, Andy. There we go. Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, I just want to thank the council and the mayor for an opportunity to give back to the community. I enjoy, uh, serving on this board.
Thank you. Well, we're awfully glad to have you, and that's been offered for the consent agenda. I see no objections. So you do not have to rejoin us on the 22nd of March for our regular, but as I told the Ms. Samuels, you're, you're always welcome, so thank you.
Thank you.
For your service. Item number five is a request to, to approve the amendment to the police agreement with the Michigan Wolves and Hawks Soccer Club. This comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation to allow Michigan Hawks Soccer Club to assume the current lease for the continued use of J.C. Park Soccer Fields. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council President Ted Davis, representing Parks and Recreation. We are asking that there be a lease amendment to the current agreement, uh, that allows the current Michigan Hawks and Wolves Soccer Club to maintain and utilize J.C. Park. The current, uh, agreement is up, is through good through April 30th, 2025, with a five-year extension, which would give them an option to have the park until April 30th, 23rd. Uh, Michigan Hawks and the Michigan Wolves have both been good partners with us. This is a split of this organization. They're separating out into a boys' and a girls', uh, group. So we are asking that this go to the Michigan Hawks Soccer Club. I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Davis. Uh, Councilmember Donavick, and then Councilmember Dolly.
I just wanted to say this is an awesome program, and hats off to everyone that's making it possible. And I would like to offer an approval for consent if there's any objection.
All right, uh, would you like that on consent? All right, uh, Councilmember Dolly.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'll just say, uh, reading the assignment here that's in our packet, our friend from Clark Hill and the other attorneys who are possibly on the call here in regards to this, should think about submitting this as a bar exam question. This would be a great way to test co, contract law here, especially with the fact scenario. But I, I will, um, jump on the praise here. My, my children have utilized these youth programs before. Um, it's good organizations and glad to do business with them. Thank you.
All right, so there are no objections to, um, placing this on the consent. So Mr. Bagni, thank you for being with us this evening. You do not need to return on March 22nd. Item number six, which I, I really like the optimism in this request, is a request, is to request permission from Wayne County to close a portion of Farmington Road to host Livonia's annual Memorial Day cer, ceremony. This comes to us from the Department of Parks and Recreation. Close Farmington Road north and southbound from Five Mile Road to Roycroft on Saturday, May 29th, 2021, from 8:30 a.m. to 10 a.m. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Council President. We are being optimistic here, hoping that we do have a Memorial Day ceremony on May 29th. This request would go into Wayne County to authorize us, authorize us to close from, to road from Five Mile to Roycroft. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have on this.
Council? Uh, Councilmember, uh, Toy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you, Mr. Davis, for your optimism, and I sure hope we can do this. Uh, it's, uh, quite a nice event we do in Livonia, uh, at The Rock there. We've been doing it for many years, and, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask for an approving on consent, if I may. Thank you.
Are there any objections? All right, seeing none, we'll place that on the, uh, consent agenda, and we sure are hoping, Mr. Davis, that we're going to be able to have that special ceremony.
We are. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Number seven is a request to approve the Livonia Command Officer Salary and Benefit Changes. This comes to us from the Civil Service Department for the period December 1st, 2020, through November 3rd, 2023. Good evening, Ms. Mayor.
Good evening, Council President. Good evening, council members. I am very happy to be before you again so soon with another collective bargaining agreement that we've settled with our Livonia Command Officers Union. It's in two sections, um, and it includes all of the changes that will happen to the contract, that will be made to the contract, um, including operations, salary, salary, um, increases for the next three years as well as benefit changes. And I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have about, uh, the letter that our labor attorney Greg Schultz provided, as well as the tentative agreement itself.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Dolly, and then Vice President Barr.
Ms. Mayor, just, uh, to be clear here for the record, I, I think I know the answer to this. But when we talk about the Livonia Command Officers Association, that's what we used to know as the Livonia Sergeants Association, correct?
That's correct. It was the, uh, Livonia Lieutenants and Sergeants Association. Uh, the captains requested they be included, and once they, once council approved that, the council also approved changing the name to the Liv, Livonia Command Officers Association.
Okay, and, and so now, the only, am I right or am I wrong here when I say the only people who are not represented at the police station are the chief and the deputy chief? Is that correct?
That's correct, and the public service aides. Well, the public, I, I take that back. The public service aides are a subunit of the LPOA contract.
Sounds good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll defer to Mr. Barr. Thank you.
Uh, Vice President Barr.
My turn, my turn to not realize I was muted. Um, it was going to happen eventually. I, I did scan the documents you sent, but can you just confirm for me? Are, are the particulars of this consistent with what we approved previously for the police officer's contract?
Yes, they are, including the 12-hour shifts.
And including the insurance changes?
I'm sorry, including?
The insurance changes are consistent?
Yes, they are. Those are, those are actually item nine on your agenda this evening because the, um, the union had requested that we separate them uh, because they didn't want the insurance changes to affect the, the, uh, ratification of the contract for the union. They weren't sure exactly how the union was going to, uh, respond to the insurance offering, but I'm very happy to say that they were, they, uh, they did vote for that as well. So you'll see that as item number nine on your agenda.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, um, Councilmember Dolly?
With that, I'll offer an approving for consent.
All right, any, uh, concerns, objections to placing that on consent? All right, seeing none, we'll place that on consent. Item number eight is a request to approve the Livonia Police Officers Association of Michigan, POAM, on behalf of its affiliate, the Livonia Police Officers Association Police Service Aid Unit, uh, often known as the PSA's, Unit B tentative agreement. This too comes from the Civil Service Department for the period of December 1st, 2020, through November 30th, 2023. Ms. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, this is the contract for the public, the police service aid unit. Um, as, as I mentioned earlier, they are a subunit of the LPOA contract. Um, and they, while they did not, the changes to their contract don't completely mirror LPOA. Um, there are several, um, sections that are the same as LPOA, and then others that, um, traditionally mirror, uh, 192, the AFSC union. And I'll be happy to answer any question about the TA.
Uh, Councilmember Toy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, everything seems to be in order. I think Ms. Mayor is spending enough of our money, so, um, thank you. Um, and, uh, well, well spent as well, so I'll offer an approving, Madam, uh, Chair. And if you think it's appropriate for consent, be happy to do that as well.
All right, we have that offered on consent. Uh, Councilmember Dolly?
I will not, I'll try my best to not speak any, anymore after this. This is a good opportunity to thank the police service aides in Livonia. Um, I had a great opportunity to work with them as a court officer and as magistrate, and these are the, uh, generally speaking, the, uh, people who have a desire to become a police officer and are either going through their, uh, early college education or they are awaiting a place at a police academy. Um, we've had some really great PSAs over the years who have turned out to be really great officers. It's a great recruitment tool for us. Um, and it's oftentimes, I got to think, a thankless job when our police officers are bringing people into the station. The PSAs are oftentimes dealing with them in a way that none of us could really even imagine in terms of booking them, processing them, uh, ensuring that they have the ability to make phone calls and things of that nature, all while ensuring that their safety is taken care of as well. So let's thank them all, and, um, you know, I'll, I'll know my, my being appreciative of them. Thank you.
Wow, very well said, Mr. Dolly. Uh, Councilmember Donovan?
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to echo Councilman Dolly's, uh, words about PSAs. A lot of departments do not have this asset of police service aide, someone that's inside the station that is able to assist the police officers with booking procedures, with taking care of, uh, desk phone calls and other things that can, uh, maybe alleviate stress, uh, for our officers so they can handle calls for service on the road. Uh, a lot of times residents don't know who they're talking to, but it is maybe someone in their early twenties that wants to become a police officer. And what a great, great way to recruit, uh, potential people to, to become police officers and really show them, you know, what law enforcement career is like. So hats off to, uh, Chief Cade and the Police Department for recognizing this program and really, uh, utilizing its maximum potential. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Um, did we have that, has anyone offered this? Councilmember Toy? You, you had offered this?
She did.
Yes. Okay, that's what I thought. I had Toy written down, but then I knew you had offered another one, so, um, I thought you did. All right. Um, so that'll be on the consent. I just want to say, I'm going to put in a plug for the PSA program. If anyone knows, any young people who are contemplating a career in law enforcement, they could not do better than applying for a police service aide, um, position. It's a way to get to know the department, get to know law enforcement, and put yourself on a track to having, uh, the city pay for your, uh, police academy training and also for your education. All right, item number nine is a request for authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the city of Livonia and the Livonia Command Officers Association. This comes to us from the Civil Service Department to implement a new dental and optical plan. Ms. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. We're very excited about this new dental insurance program. And as I mentioned earlier, the LCOA had requested that we keep this separate from the actual TA itself. Um, they're obviously excited about it as well. They're impressed with the, the amount of benefits for the cost, and, um, we're, so we're looking for approval to implement this dental program for LCOA. Um, it was part of the LPOA TA, so it was part and parcel for LPOA, and we're als, it's also part of the, um, PSA TA. So this is a benefit that will be offered to these three unions, um, in, in front of the rest of the city, but we are working to get it, to bring it to the rest of the groups as well.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Council?
Madam President, I'll offer an approving for consent.
All right, any comments, any objections to placing that on consent? All right, seeing none, we'll place that on the consent agenda of March 22nd. Moving on, item number 10, this is an award of bid. This comes to us from the Livonia Housing Commission for the installation of an accessible pathway at Greenwood Park under the 2020-2021 Community Development Block Grant Program. Ms. Isaacson?
Good, uh, good evening, Council President Brandy Isaacson, Livonia Housing Commission. I am just here to request, um, the approval to award the bid to Best Ashfall Incorporated. On February 2nd, the Parks and Rec Department received four quotes or court, four bids, uh, for the paving, for a pedestrian accessible pathway to the play structure at Greenwood Park. Um, this activity has already been approved and budgeted through the 2020-21 Community Development Block Grant. Um, therefore, we would just like to move forward to, uh, approve a contract with Best Ashfall.
Uh, Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, this, uh, item is a, is another way to look at the commitment for, uh, our parks in, in general, of us trying to make things more accessible for, uh, for our citizens, and hats off to great use of, um, great use of the Community Development Block Grant, and I applaud all the efforts. And between this item and the next item are wonderful. Um, if there's no objection, I'll put this, uh, offer an approving resolution for consent.
Uh, are there any objections? Seeing none, I, I, I'm certainly not going to offer an objection since this was, uh, Greenwood Park was the, um, was the, uh, park of my childhood. So many, uh, many hours were spent reenacting very dramatic scenes from Little House on the Prairie at the play structure. Anyway. Item number 11 is an award of bid. This comes to us from Livonia Housing. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Brandy, I saw your hand up again. I'm going to comment on that item. Award of bid, this comes to us from Livonia Housing Commission for installation of accessible pathways at Dover Park under the 2021, 2020 through 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program. Brandy?
Thank you. Um, on February 2nd, we received 11 bids to, um, install three pathways to Dover Park. Again, this is just creating an accessible pathway for individuals who, uh, might be physically, um, disabled to the play structure. Um, we would like to request approval to award the contract to K D, K D Sumet in the amount of $33,445.50.
Councilmember McCullough?
President, uh, seeing as last item, again, this is a great opportunity to make our parks more accessible, and it's a great step forward. Um, crazy to see the amount of, uh, bidders, uh, in this, in these times. I think there is an 11. Um, so, uh, that is obviously a, you know, showing what the market looks like. Um, I would be happy to offer an approving resolution for consent.
All right, uh, we see no objections to, um, to this, so we will put that on the, uh, consent agenda for the March 22nd meeting. Number 12, request to approve specialized services transportation operating assistance program, third-party contract for the period October 1, 2020, through September 30th, 2021, between the city of Livonia and SMART. This comes to us from Livonia Housing Commission with grant funds to be used for the Livonia Community Transit Program to provide lift-equipped transportation to senior and disabled residents of the city. Ms. Isaacson?
Uh, we are just, again, just requesting approval of the contract with SMART to be able to receive an operating assistance funding in the amount of $22,103. This funding is actually used to provide lift equipment onto the transportation vehicles um, so that we can, uh, transport those that are physically disabled.
Uh, Councilmember, uh, Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this is very worthwhile, and I would like to offer an approving resolution on consent.
All right, so seeing no objections, we will place that on consent. All right, item 13 is a request to authorize appropriation expenditure. This comes to us from the Public Works Division to send out for repair of 2014 Freightliner to Wolverine Truck Sales to have engine rebuilt to, um, I, I, I think, to extend the usefulness of said vehicle from budgeted funds. Uh, Mr. Roroff, is that you? Good evening.
Good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for having us. That is correct. Um, unfortunately, uh, we are not before you too often with, uh, engine failures or breakdowns in the equipment that we buy, but, um, this particular vehicle, um, is a 2014, as you mentioned. It's a frontline vehicle for our snow and ice program. We had noticed, started to notice some problems with this during the leave program that we had, uh, the operator had to continually put some coolant and, and different fluids into this truck, and, uh, we could never really- And we could never really find a leak anywhere. So when we had the leaf program come to a close here at the end of the season, we took it into the dealer to have them look at it and kind of like a perfect storm type of situation that's happened here. So what we're looking to do is have the engine replaced. Again, on these vehicles, the normal life expectancy for, for these trucks are, you know, 12 to 15 years. This one's six years old. So we're expecting a good seven to eight more years out of this truck after the repair. So we are looking, the recommendation tonight, we're looking to authorize payment to Wolverine Truck, Truck Sales in the amount of $28,241.05 with an additional $3,000 contingent amount to cover any unforeseen costs that may be coming along with this long block engine replacements for a total of $31,241.05. And I would be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Vice President Barr?
No questions, Madam President. I thought the information provided was thorough. I just want to compliment Don and his team. We've seen this before and we're seeing it again where you guys are just the, the efforts you go to to get what you need at the most cost-efficient way you can. And I applaud you for that. So I'd offer this for approving for consent, if there's no objection.
I see no objections, so we'll place that on consent. Thank you, Mr. Roroff. Item 15 is request release general improvement bond. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for Heritage Square Site Condominiums located at the east side of Newburgh Road between Five Mile and Six Mile Roads, 36900 and 36910 Mallory Drive. That's at the former Clay Elementary School site and 16600 Newburgh Road and a portion of 16700 Newburgh Road in the northwest quarter of section 17. This was Council Resolution 403-18.
Good evening, Madam President, City Councilmembers. This is just, this is just a housekeeping issue. We're releasing the general improvement bond back to the developer, Leo Sove. As you know, this development, I think, started over two and a half years ago over there off of Newburgh Road. And there were some repairs on the road last fall to allow us to release the, the bond money that's being held. Again, just looking for your approval in the amount of $104,472. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember White?
I'll offer approving on consent, if there's no objection.
All right, see no objections, so we'll place that on consent. Item number 15 is request release sidewalk bond, entrance markers, landscaping bond and monuments and markers bond. This comes to us from the Engineering Division for Arbor Trail Estates and Site Condominium located on the south side of Ann Arbor Trail between Newburgh Road and Dowling Avenue in the southeast quarter of section 32. Council Resolution 149-16 and Council Resolution 335-16.
Again, Madam President, same thing as before, just the housekeeping issue for Ann Arbor Trail Estates development. We're asking for release in the amount of $13,650 for sidewalk entrance and landscape markers, along with monuments and monuments, the bonds that were held now that the item has been completed to our satisfaction and looking to release those funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinsik. Council?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'll offer an approving for consent, sorry.
All right. No objections, seeing none. We'll move on to our last item of the item. This is a proposed amendment to the Lawonia Code of Ordinance. This comes to us from the Department of Law to amend the sewage disposal system ordinance, chapter 13.20, section 050, connection rates for, connection rates for buildings fee schedule and section 060, connection rates for buildings computation guidelines.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'll offer an approving for consent.
All right. It can't go on consent, it's an ordinance amendment.
I'll offer an approving.
For the regular?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will place it on the regular agenda. We will go back at this time, we go back to the audience. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to communicate with the Council on any item not in the evening's agenda, now is your final opportunity to do so. Going once, going twice, gone. Good night, thank you, Lawonia TV. Thank you, Lawonia Information Systems. Good night, Lawonia.